Wonderful. So as I said earlier, my name is Ray Santos. I'm joined here with my CEO Valerie Freyas. She'll be acting as our moderator for today's forum. Just a brief introduction. Ethos is Boston's first community-based nonprofit devoted solely to keeping elders at home. As part of our mission, we're always trying to bring issues that are relevant to older adults to the forefront of debate. And you know, we're holding this forum and other forums like that to bring our candidates who hopefully will be representing, you know, our older adults closer to, you know, the voters and allowing them to share their thoughts about aging and the issues that are important to them. This event includes the two candidates for Boston City Council District Six, Mary Tamer and Kendra Hicks. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Valerie Freyas and she'll be going over some ground rules and go right into the forum. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Valerie.
I'm Val Freyas, the CEO here at Ethos. I want to thank both candidates for making the time to be with us today and all of our attendees for being here as well. We've received some questions from those in our community and I have a set of questions. We're going to open up with three-minute opening statements from both candidates. Thereafter, I'm going to alternate between candidates with a question. You have two minutes to respond to each question. And I reserve the right to follow up and also to answer any questions that come based on your opening statements. And we will also ask meeting participants to send in questions if they have them. So that if we have time, we can get to some of those as well, in addition to the ones that we received ahead of time. Ray and his staff are going to be timing and we're going to be pretty tight on time because we do want to make sure that it's an equitable forum and that we get enough time for each question, for each candidate. And with that, you're going to get a 15-second reminder and maybe about a three-second grace period before your mic is muted. So I do suggest that everyone be as concise as possible and mindful of the time so we can get through as many topics as possible. So we did a point toss off-screen and Mary Tamer, you are the first with opening statements and your three minutes begins now.
Thank you, Val, and thanks to Ray and Patrice and Anne and everyone at Ethos for bringing us together for what is a very important topic for me, and that is our seniors and how they're doing in our community. And I am Mary Tamer. I am the proud granddaughter of immigrants from Lebanon on one side, in Syria on the other. And both of my grandparents on both sides were small business owners here in Boston. My grandmother was a seamstress who had a local shop on Grove Street in West Roxbury. And she employed more than two dozen women and they made suits for local department stores. And my grandfather from Damascus had a corner store in Roxbury, which was really quite the Middle Eastern enclave at the time with lots of immigrants from Syria and Lebanon. I had the great benefit and privilege of growing up in a multi-generational home. My grandparents had a two-family home here in West Roxbury. So my grandfather and grandmother lived upstairs with my great aunt Mabel and I lived downstairs with my parents and my two sisters. And so for me, learning so much about culture and community, living in this multi-generational model has really helped to inform my thinking and my commitment to the elders in our community and what we can do for them. I want to mention, early on in this campaign, the Jamaica Plain Progressives hosted a forum and we were asked dozens of questions. And when I made my closing remarks, my statement at the end was, why was there not one question asked about our seniors? Not one question was asked. And this is something that for anyone who serves in this role, it's Alpha and Omega. It's the beginning and the end and everything in between. We have to be focused on every member of our community. I am committed to doing more and better for our children. I am committed to doing more and better for our seniors. I'm proud to say that I have visited nearly every senior living community in District Six. And it has been my pleasure to listen and learn and to hear the struggles that our seniors have specifically gone through through this pandemic. The fear that so many folks have about being, you know, kept inside again, not having access to, you know, do aqua aerobics at the YMCA, not to be able to go to the Tai Chi classes that Ethos sponsors twice a week here in West Roxbury. We need to make sure that the lines of communications are kept open with our seniors, that they are having opportunities to be in community with one another. None of us wants to be isolated. And I just want you to know that my commitment to our seniors runs very deep. And I look forward to sharing more in the time we have together this morning. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. Kendra?
Thank you so much to everyone for inviting me to be here today. As was mentioned, my name is Kendra Hicks and I'm running to represent District Six in Boston City Council. And for me, this is not just a political campaign. I really do believe that we are in a moment in the city and in this country where we have a unique opportunity to really build together a better, more equitable future for our district and our city. And I think that if we want to make that vision a reality, we need to continue to build power and representation of the people who are most directly impacted by these issues within the city council. Now, I like to introduce myself usually by telling people a story and sharing a parable, so if you'll allow me. I want you to imagine yourself standing at the edge of a river. And as that river is flowing downstream towards you, you notice that there is a baby in a basket sitting in the river. And as you're standing there, you notice that there's two, three more babies floating downstream towards you in the river. Your initial reaction, and I hope everybody's initial reaction, is to jump in to the river and start trying to pull the babies out of the water, right? Trying to save as many as you can. But my invitation is for us to imagine, what does it mean for some of us, at least, to get out of the river and take a walk to the top of the stream and find out who is putting the babies in the river in the first place and why? And so this is a parallel that I use often when I'm facilitating racial justice workshops. And it's really meaningful to me because I've been every character in that story. As a first-generation black woman, I've been the baby floating down the river. When I was a youth organizer and a youth worker, I was the person who was working really hard to try and pull the babies out of the river. And when I decided to run for office, it was because I wanted to step out of the river and walk upstream and make the real big systemic changes that are necessary to stop our babies from getting in the river in the first place. And the reason why I did that is because I believe that together we can ensure that our children have an equitable education. We can invest in affordable housing. We can free accessible public transit for all of our neighbors. Environmental protections that are going to keep our most vulnerable communities resilient in the face of climate change and vibrant intergenerational communities where seniors are cared for and connected. And this is a vision that we've created collectively for District Six. And we have a 36 initiative policy platform that I know is going to be able to get us there. And if you elect me as your city councillor, I really take this vision as a mandate. And I'll be bringing all of my years of experience with me to make sure that we're a city that works for the many and not just a few. I have a senior father myself who lives in senior public housing. And so thank you so much for the folks at Ethos for all of the work that you've done in educating us on these issues. It's definitely a learning curve for me and I'm looking forward to listen and to learn more about your needs and to answer questions about what our vision is for meeting those needs in the city of Boston. Because I don't believe that senior issues are separate from education issues, are separate from housing issues, are separate from issues of rent control, are separate from issues of economic justice. Because ultimately seniors are a part of our community and they're impacted by all of these issues just the same. So I'm looking forward to talking a little bit more about my policy platform. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kendra. First question is for you. It will be the same question for both of you. I moved to District 26 a little over 25 years ago. The district looks very different than it did when I first moved there. It's wealthier, it's demographically different in terms of ethnic and racial makeup, in terms of LGBTQ community, who's been pushed out, quite frankly, of large swaths of District Six. So that's a preface to the question on housing. How would you, as a District Six city councillor, look to address the rising rents, housing prices for both sales and rental market as it relates to elders? We'll get to subsidize a little bit later, but right now I want to talk just about the sort of broader issue in District Six of the rapid rise in the cost of being able to actually age in place in District Six.
Thank you so much for that question. So I think that there are three things that we can do, and these are all things that are a part of my policy platform. I think that one of the things that we need to do is protect the renters that are currently here and stop and slow down displacement. And so one of the things that I want to do is work on the passage of Article 91 in the City of Boston zoning code, which would help us establish anti-displacement zone overlays in high-risk neighborhoods. I think that that's going to be an investment in a just recovery from the pandemic and it's really going to affirm the right of the people who are here to stay. If we create these anti-displacement zones, we can put resources into those specific neighborhoods that are at risk to make sure that the renters there are protected and are able to stay in their homes. I think in addition to that, what's made really obvious is that the market for rental properties and homeownership is completely volatile right now and not under control. And so we've been talking about rent control and rent stabilization at the state level. It's not something that we have the opportunity to do at the city level yet. But I want to work in tandem with our state officials to make sure that we're doing the work of regulating the market. Not only so people are able to afford their rents, but also so that, you know, if you're retiring, you're also able to afford your property taxes and you're able to stay in your home when you retire or you're living on social security and so on and so forth. It's really important that we champion rent control and work to stabilize the market. In addition to that, we've seen that community land trust play a really, really big part in not only stabilizing neighborhoods, but giving us affordable housing in perpetuity. And so I want to bring the support for community land trust up to scale and make sure that the city is increasing support for community land trust all across District Six and in the city of Boston.
Thank you. Mary, same question.
Yeah, thanks, Val. It's such an important question and, you know, and I will say this. So the Boston City Council has absolutely no control over rent control. That is a state issue and I am very focused on what we can do at the Boston level to address the crisis that we're in. Number one, we need more housing, period. We need more affordable housing, we need more middle-income housing. So paving the way for the creation of more housing and lifting some of the zoning burdens that we currently have specifically for affordable housing projects, I think is a very tangible thing that we can do at the city level. I do want to address the issue of an anti-displacement zone. For so many of the folks that I've spoken to in District Six and specifically in Jamaica Plain, the people who scrimped and saved, for example, to get a two-family or get a three-family, and they are only able to keep their house because of the rent that they are paid by their tenants. If we had an anti-displacement zone where people were exempt from paying rent, the folks who own those homes will no longer be able to keep their homes because they can't pay their mortgages if we're living in a rent-free zone. So we need to focus on tangible ideas that address the crisis. Number one, we have lots of underutilized buildings in the city of Boston. My father went to Roselandale High School. Roselandale High School is now affordable senior housing. It is a beautiful facility. Same thing with the Longfellow School in Roselandale, also affordable senior housing. We also, in Hyde Park right now, the former Rogers Middle School is being converted into middle-income and affordable housing units with a specific focus on the LGBTQ plus community that you mentioned. So we know what we need to do. We have vacant lots that we could build upon. And again, if we lift these zoning burdens that currently exist specifically for our affordable projects, I think that there's a lot more that we could tackle to keep people in Boston and also property tax relief for our seniors who want to stay in the homes that they have lived in for decades.
Okay, so that actually paved the way for a follow-up question. I see a difference in the two of you and I worked for a long time with the state legislature and at the federal Capitol. So please tell me three things that you would use the bully pulpit for at the state legislature, Mary and then Kendra. Quick, quick. So we're going to do this one and sort of rapid.
Specifically, but specifically for seniors or just for anything?
For anything right now. I'd like to know the top three things that you would actually use the bully pulpit at the state legislature for.
Yeah, greater voting access, number one, including same-day registration. I am fully on board for that as the former president of the League of Women Voters of Boston. Number two, leveraging our relationships with the state to address the regional problem of substance use disorder that is impacting all of our neighborhoods here in Boston, specifically the mass and caste area that gets a lot of attention. But we also have it in Jamaica Plain, West Roxbury, Roselandale as well. That would be number two. And I think number three would be doing whatever we can to lift current burdens that surround the process of building affordable housing and keeping buildings affordable, like the Forbes Building. I am fully in favor of the home rule petition that the city council put forward and I testified in favor of it to keep those 147 residents who are elderly and disabled in the Forbes Building, regardless of the fact that their 13A is about to expire. We cannot displace those people.
Okay, that's a different question, Mary, but I just wanted to thank you. Kendra, just three issuers that you would advocate for at the state level.
Yeah, I think that deepening democracy is really important. One of the issues that I've been willing to champion and advocate for is giving people who are residents and not citizens the municipal right to vote and increasing democracy in that way by giving people who live in our neighborhoods the right to vote. I think secondly, like I mentioned earlier, I would advocate for rent stabilization issue and give the city of Boston the ability to make decisions about how we manage our rents here in the city. And I think the third issue would be around black and maternal health and giving support to black maternal health here in the city of Boston. My son was born at home. I had a home birth, particularly because of all of the issues that black women see when they go into healthcare facilities. And so for me, that's an issue that's very near and dear to my heart, increasing accessibility to midwives and making sure that at the state level, we're really meeting those issues.
Great, thank you. So this next question is on COVID and social isolation. So prior to the pandemic, about one in five elders reported feeling socially isolated. That has become even more pronounced since the pandemic began. And while we were converting many of our social engagement, community engagement programs to Zoom and other platforms, what became, what existed always, but really was in technicolor are those disparities based on race and income status that became, and language, that became really apparent to us when we moved to Zoom, when people didn't have access to tablets or computers. It wasn't in their language. They weren't necessarily literate in the technology if they had it. So this is an equity question and a COVID-related equity question. As a District Six councillor, what would you do to work with our elders on those disparities that exist throughout the district and throughout the city? Kendra, I believe this one is you. No, I'm sorry. Mary, this is you first.
Yeah, this is something, Val, I've heard so much about. So my mother-in-law lives at Sophia Snow House, which is senior housing in Roselandale in the district. And there were many months where not only could we not see my mother-in-law, who we're very close to, but we had to deliver groceries and leave them outside the building, whether it was groceries, medicine that she needed. We would drop bags off outside of Sophia Snow House and someone would come out, bring them inside. This was an incredibly difficult time for so many of our seniors and our children. I think our seniors and our children have truly suffered the most through this pandemic. Just last week, I announced a policy plan to reopen West Roxbury High School. We have the opportunity, this building has been somewhat vacant, but still being used for the city for the last two and a half years. It's almost 300,000 square feet. It has beautiful grounds, 44 acres outside the building, $15 million investment in the fields and an Olympic-sized swimming pool. So we have the opportunity to do an intergenerational model where we have a seven-day-a-week senior center where seniors can come together, they can exercise, they can take classes, they can have book club, they can have a nurse check their blood pressure. We could have, you know, a surround care model for our seniors, but also the opportunity for our seniors to interact with our students. We can bring history to life by having Vietnam veterans in history classrooms talking about what it was like to be a veteran in a time of conflict versus reading about it in a textbook. This model is a proven model. It exists in Swamscott. There is loads of research that tell us the benefits for children and for our seniors in intergenerational models. And we have an opportunity to renovate this building, to do the work and to put it back into use and address the needs that so many seniors have shared with me, is that they want a place they can go to every single day to see their friends and be engaged in their community. And this is an opportunity for folks of all income levels, ethnicities and lingual backgrounds, linguistic backgrounds.
I'm going to give you 30 more seconds. I really want to hear our response on the disparity piece and how you would look at the disparity piece specifically.
Yeah, one of the things I think we can do, Val, and I know Ethos is already doing this. I've participated in the food pantries that exist here in District Six. I believe that we have to have social work and mental health counseling as a component, as well as meal service and also social services for folks who need help navigating, whether it is filling out their paperwork to access services, filling out paperwork for Section 8 housing. We know that we need folks who need the assistance, need to be connected to services. And I believe that that is part of the role of what the senior center could serve, is having, almost like back in the day when we had little city halls. I've heard from so many of our seniors, they don't want to go downtown to do the work, to get the help they need on different things. We can have that centrally located in a senior center and have the people there to answer the questions and to offer the assistance that those folks need.
Thanks. Kendra, social isolation and disparity, same question.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we've learned about with the COVID-19 pandemic has been that it's made issues that were already issues in our communities exacerbated and more visible, right? I think that the issue of social isolation, I think that we are in a crisis of connection in the world. I think it's something that we've seen and as we've kind of been more isolated with the COVID-19 pandemic, it's exacerbated it. The rates of depression and mental health issues have increased with seniors, but also with young people and children. We've seen the increase in suicide attempts from very, very young people as well. And so we really need to make sure that we're providing mental health services and that we're increasing equity in that way. I think that there is not only a lack of resources for these mental health services, but that they become inaccessible. I think that there are cultural barriers to people looking for these health services. And we need to really do the work of having community conversations to remove some of the cultural barriers to looking for this kind of support. It's not just language, but also culture in terms of what stops people from looking for these supports. And they also need to be available when people are looking for them. I think in the form of equity and the inequities that have been made clear in terms of accessibility, I'm a big proponent of publicly-owned utilities. And I think that we need to start looking, we need to stop looking at the internet as something that is a privilege and something that in 2021 is actually absolutely necessary. And work and to find ways how we as a city can really make sure that everybody is connected online specifically as we see that the pandemic has had an impact and made us have to be more hyper online. So I think that looking at publicly-owned utilities, expanding internet access for seniors and also having people who are in these homes working with seniors to make sure that they understand how to use the technology is going to be really helpful. I'm sorry, was that my time? No, 15 seconds. Thank you so much. And so increasing access to mental health, breaking down barriers to looking for services and also making sure that we're building an accessibility at a structural level, not just dropping off computers to people and training them once off, but that the city is making a commitment to make sure that internet access and internet literacy is something that's felt across the board.
Great, thank you. So next question, Kendra, you start this one. And timers, I'd like actually three minutes on this one because it's a two-part question. The first is with ARPA funds coming in to the city and throughout the state. The first part of the question is how you work with the city as a District Six councillor to ensure that the community is provided for. And the second part is if it were up to you exclusively on how you would spend those funds and prioritize spending those funds, on what would you prioritize that spending?
Thank you. That's a great question. I think the first part of the question is that I am somebody who believes that the people closest to the issues should have decision-making power about what happens with those resources. And so as an elected official, my hope is that if we have these financial resources coming into the city, that we would host community conversations with seniors around the district and around the city to talk about what they would like the money to be used for. What are the things that are the most necessary in this moment? I think that in our meeting yesterday with Ethos, we got a really good idea about what was necessary and the things that seniors were struggling with. And I also think that engaging in the process, like engaging in the democratic process is something that particularly for seniors, as we're talking about how they've been disconnected from the communities, is going to be helpful in order to bring people more into community and to having conversations together. And so when I think about big pots of money that are coming into the city and I think about specifically what we're going to use that money for, I have my own ideas. And also, I don't believe that much in my own brilliance to not listen to the folks who are going to be directly impacted by these issues. And so a lot of the work that I did at the Boston Public Health Commission was around community engagement and finding racial and ethnic approaches to community health. And so my job was to lead a coalition of about 300 women to have these kind of conversations. And so I would employ some of that experience there to mobilize people to have these conversations and create a collective plan, similar to what I did with my policy platform, where we brought people in to talk about each of the issues and create a policy platform collectively. I would employ some of that knowledge, that experience and that practice to create a plan that people can get behind because they felt invested in what we were spending the money on. Of course, there are immediate needs, right? We talked about food insecurity, we talked about mental health issues, we talked about affordable housing, all things that I think we should spend resources on. And I think that the democratic process is strengthened by having more conversations with people. So that would be my hope.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah, so we are coming into a substantial amount of money. And in addition to the federal relief funds, we're coming into the city is also, at this point in time, we have $1 billion more in revenue as a result of our real estate tax base than we did seven years ago. And so the city is not hurting for money. So let's make that clear. So as I mentioned, based on the conversations that I've been having, which have helped to inform my specific senior policy platform that is on my website, the senior center idea came from so many dozens and dozens of conversations with seniors about what they wanted to see happen. We have more seniors in District Six than any other part of the city. We have the funds to renovate a 266,000-square-foot building and bring it back to life as a combination senior center and seven-through-12 STEM and vocational technical school. We have the chance to do that. I would hate to see us lose out on this opportunity. And I did notice that somebody in one of the question chats had asked about transportation. I do want to address that as well. We do have MBTA that does go to, that does go to West Roxbury High School. I know we also have the ride and I've also heard from seniors about sometimes the ride is not as reliable as we need it to be. I also think we have the opportunity though to have a senior shuttle. Others have done this, other cities. And I think it's important as a city councillor that we look to other cities around the country to see what are they doing? What are they doing well and how can we replicate that here? We have the opportunity to do a shuttle. We have the means, we have the know-how, we just need to do it. And so I think that that would absolutely be part of my plan is making sure this is accessible to, yes, the MBTA is, I don't even get me started on the MBTA, Patricia.
I'm sorry, can I just, we're going to call those for questions. So if you can perhaps not respond to the chat.
Okay, but I think that, but in addition to that, the school department is also coming into $454 million in federal relief funds. And I know for those of you who are here who might be parents or grandparents, we have a lot of work to do to address the challenges and the inequities in the Boston public schools. That would be another focus for me in terms of making sure that money is well-spent. And the last thing I will mention, and this speaks directly to the disparities we see here in the city, we need to place a far greater focus on public health and the social determinants of health, whether or not we're in a pandemic. We have two neighborhoods in the city that are two miles apart that have a 33-year age difference in life expectancy, 33-year difference. We need to focus on the social determinants of health, the toxic stress that some of the folks in our community are living under and how, where we live and what we do for work impacts our life expectancy. Public health needs to become a far greater priority in the city of Boston. And that would be another thing that I would also focus on.
Thank you. Next question is on transportation. So Mary, you started, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask it in a broader context and in a slightly different context, although I think it goes to some of the comments in the chat. District Six has, in addition to some other districts, but District Six does not have the best connected public transit system, either downtown to the hospital area or to certain parts of District Six are served by limited bus service. So my question- So my question is related to current pandemic time and post-pandemic. During the pandemic currently, seniors are wary of getting on the T, either train or bus because of perhaps waning vaccination, people not wearing masks, things like that, or just physical difficulty or proximity. So my question is, how would you address the immediate transportation need for our elders? And then the broader transportation need of transit-oriented development as it relates to things like affordable housing?
Well, I'm very in favor of transit-oriented development, Val. And actually, there's a project literally right around the corner from my house that's happening right across from not only a commuter rail station, but also several bus lines here in West Roxbury. So I think that transit-oriented development has to be a priority throughout the city, not just here in District Six. Unfortunately, when it comes to the MBTA, I think a lot of folks can talk about, you know, what they can do for the MBTA, but the sad reality is it is a statewide issue. I would love to see that the MBTA's board has a Boston seat because we are the number-one consumer and user of the MBTA, and to not have representation on that board, I think, is really tragic. But also, as someone who, you know, used to work over in Cambridge and took, you know, buses and trains to get there every day, it took me ninety minutes going each way to get to Harvard Square and back. It is, it is not convenient, it is not reliable, and I think that is one of the greatest challenges we face. But this is something where I would use the bully pulpit. I think that we as Bostonians and as city counselors have to demand better from the state. We have, when, you know, the man just got killed falling through a set of stairs just yesterday, another set of stairs falling apart at one of our T stations. Our T has been long neglected. We have to address this, it is a crisis. And in the midst of a pandemic, the fact that we have folks fighting on the bus and fighting on trains because someone's wearing a mask and someone's not wearing a mask at a time when I know many of us are doing everything we can to remain safe, we have to have more personnel, MBTA personnel, who are there to monitor these situations. No one should be faced with a confrontation on their way to work or on their way to a meeting. But I do think, Val, this is, you know, it's frustrating for me as a city resident that I frankly have so little to do with the inadequacy of the MBTA. I think it's a huge, huge issue, and I wish the governor and the legislature would address it in a more meaningful way.
I'm going to follow up on that, and then Kendra, I would ask that you answer this as well, and we'll give you two, two minutes and thirty to answer. The city does operate the senior shuttle and things like that, so not all elder transportation is in the state purview. How would you work to make that more accessible, equitable, and make sure that people are aware of its availability?
Yeah, I think the awareness piece is huge, Val, and I think that is one of the things, when even when it comes to what services are available, whether it's for our seniors or whether it's for our Boston public school parents. If you are not, you know, you don't speak English, you know, maybe you're a recent arrival to the city, there's so much that folks are not able to access or know about, and we need to do better in terms of informing what is available. I would love to see where the senior shuttle currently travels, and if there are deficits in terms of what neighborhoods are being served, we have to address that, there's no reason. We have seniors in every neighborhood in the city of Boston. So if there are neighborhoods that are getting more shuttles than others, is it based on population? Is it based on budget? Why is that happening? But whether it is whomever is in charge of the shuttle service, whomever's in charge of our police department, our school department, I believe in accountability, and I believe that when taxpayer dollars are involved, and they certainly are in all of these issues, that we need to know that our people are getting the services that they need. And if they're not, then we need to address why, and we need to ask those questions. And so that is something I would be very willing to do.
Thank you. Kendra? You have two and a half minutes.
Thank you, Valerie, do you mind repeating the question? I think I've trailed off in the listening.
Not at all. It was on elder access to transportation and concerns about MBTA buses and trains and their accessibility within District Six, given that District Six is partially well-served, but other parts of District Six have less public transportation available. So that was sort of part one. And then part two was the city piece. So the senior shuttle and things like that, and what you would do to make those things more accessible and more widely known to the community.
Sure, thank you so much for repeating the question, Valerie. I think that the MBTA, again, similarly as we keep repeating, is, is at the state level, right? A state issue. And the city of Boston does have control and power over the things that are, over a lot of the things that are within our city limits. And I think infrastructure is one of the big things that we have control over when it comes to into our city limits. I think that a big reason why people are worried about using the MBTA and particularly public transit in the midst of the COVID- nineteen pandemic is irregularity, but also I think that people are worried. Like you said, vaccine, you know, waning protection and so on and so forth. And the reason why our trains and our buses are crowded is because of the frequency that they come into our neighborhoods. And so I think that there is an assumption that most people here in the district either drive or get driven to where they're going. And I think that that assumption is reflective in the way that we provide service to the people in this district. Jamaica Plain, for example, is one of the places that is more regularly serviced. But in West Roxbury, there's less regular public transit, and it feels really disconnected for people to get to where they're going. And so I think that we need to expand accessibility to public transit. I think that, again, at the state level, we can do this work. I am a proponent of free and accessible public transit. Councilor Michelle Wu has a really amazing plan that I think is something that we can implement, work with the state to implement at the city level. And in terms of accessibility, you know, my father is an immigrant to this country, and my, my parents have been here. They came from the Dominican Republic probably in nineteen eighty-seven, I would say. And my father still doesn't speak English. He never learned how to speak the language, I'm here for three plus years, he doesn't speak English. And if I were to call my dad right now and tell him that there is a city-run shuttle that would help him get to where he's going, he would have no idea what I'm talking about. He wouldn't know how to access it, he wouldn't even know that it existed. And so there, and this is, you know, a senior who has a daughter who's running for political office. So that in a lot of ways is very well-connected to the resources that are in the city, and he probably wouldn't know that that was a thing. And so when we think about seniors who are not as well-connected as my father, or who don't have family members who are aware of the things that are happening in the city, what we really notice is a huge gap in people's accessibility. And so there's a lot of things that we can do, communication, again, access, language justice to make sure that it's accessible, but also how do we disseminate this information? We are, we need, again, access to internet, and also, most seniors are not online. And so we need a diversity of ways to disseminate information to the people in our communities, whether it be by mail, whether it be in neighborhood offices, whether it be knocking on people's doors, right? One of the things that my campaign did when the COVID- nineteen pandemic hit is that we used our voter file to call every single voter over seventy-five. We have, we have two-hundred-and-fifty volunteers in our campaign. We said, there's no reason for us to not use this infrastructure in the service of the people of this district. So we took the voter file and we called every single voter over seventy-five in the district and on the phone helped them to register to get their vaccine, right? That is the way, the city of Boston has resources and infrastructure that can be used to activate the people in the city, volunteers, to really make sure that we're getting information to where it needs to go. Thank you.
So, next question starts with you, Kendra. The current District Six counselor, my good friend Matt O'Malley, is, has been a very vocal advocate and proponent of climate change issues and environmental issues. He's found very creative ways to address those at the city level. It's obviously an issue that needs to be addressed locally by the state federally and internationally. I'm most curious about your thoughts on, one, what you would do in terms of climate and environment, and two, how that relates to our elders? So Kendra, this is yours first.
Thank you. So what we're seeing when it comes to climate change and environmental justice is that our most marginalized and at-risk communities are going to be hit the hardest by climate change. So that means black and brown communities, that means poor working-class communities, and that means seniors. And those are the people that are going to be the hardest hit when it comes to environmental justice. And so I have been very supportive of Councilor O'Malley's work on environmental justice and have also made a commitment on my end to look at environmental justice from a bigger, more structural issue. I think that we need to have access to compost in the neighborhood. I think that people need to be able to recycle, I think that we, you know, paperbag mandates. I think that all of those things are things that we should do because they're the right thing to do. And also, there are bigger structural issues that are making it really hard for us to meet our net-zero carbon goal by 2050. And so we need to do work of accelerating decarbonization in the city. One of my policy initiatives was to update the Beardo ordinance, and I put out this policy initiative before Beardo two-point-oh passed in the city council. And so I'm really excited that that work was moved forward by Councilor O'Malley and that we were able to kind of move it through, and that it happened. I would go further to include alternative compliance payment methods for these folks, like the biggest buildings in the city, so that we can use those resources to really subsidize senior housing places, public housing and so on and so forth, to retrofit their facilities so that they're also meeting the green standards that we've set in the city of Boston. There's a lot of work that we can do in terms of implementing traffic calming measures. Thirty percent of the emissions that come here from the state come from transportation. I'm a big proponent of fifteen-minute neighborhoods in terms of where we're building, building housing around transit. And that's something that's beneficial to our seniors, right? To be able to walk to where you buy your food, meet your friends, and have all of your activities is something that I think is going to be really important. And these infrastructure issues really impact the senior community, especially people who are using mobility devices, because you want people to feel safe crossing the street. You want people to have sidewalks that are working and are not covered in holes and so on and so forth. Thank you, Patrice, for the time. So I'll stop there, but those are my answers.
Thank you. Mary?
Thanks, Val. So, yes, this is, this is a huge issue for us and for every coastal city, frankly, but I'm very proud to say that I received the endorsement of City Councilor Matt O'Malley because I share his focus on the environment and environmental justice and know that he's done great work in this area, but the realization that there is still so much more work to be done. I fully support Beardo two-point-oh, which will put a far stricter mandate, reducing the square footage of the buildings in Boston that have to do the annual reporting, but also put forward a plan of how they are going to mitigate the emissions that they're putting out on an annual basis. But there is so much more that we can do at a macro and a micro level. I believe that, you know, recycling right now in the city of Boston is not mandatory. I believe we do need to make it mandatory, not only for our households in our apartment buildings, but also for all of our institutions. We have schools in the city of Boston that do not recycle because it's not part of the custodial contract to deal with recycled products. We need to change that, that is part of the collective bargaining agreement that we need to alter. We need to have all of our schools recycling and composting. I also believe in mandatory composting. I am someone who pays to have my composting picked up every week. We need to reduce the barrier of that and just make it something that happens every week, like trash pickup, like recycling pickup. This is very doable. And when you think about the amount of food waste that's coming just out of our institutions, our hospitals, our wonderful colleges, we have a huge opportunity and our Boston public school buildings. We also have the opportunity, Val, to set a very firm timeline for all of the city's vehicles to become electric, okay? So that is something I would push for as well. And electric Boston City fleet, electric school buses as well. This is within the realm of our control and possibility, it's a very doable thing.
Great, thank you. We're going to get back right now to affordable housing because it's, it's a question that was raised by several of our seniors who sent questions in. It's also one that requires, I think, multiple questions. There's one very specific to District Six, and one of you touched on it earlier, which is the Forbes Building on Center Street that currently is an expiring-use project. It has many, many, many longstanding residents in that building. And I am curious, if you are in the seat right now, what you would be doing to work on addressing both maintaining the affordability, and if the affordability is not maintained, how you would assist those long-term residents who will have both emotional and financial impacts and potentially mental health impacts in their lives? So this is Mary, and then Kendra.
Yeah, no, I'm glad this is part of the questioning, Val. So I am proud to say I stood with the Forbes residents in June when they had a protest outside their building about the pending evictions that are slated for March. And also was the only person in this race who testified at the city council to speak in favor of a home rule petition that was put forward to maintain the Forbes Building as, as an affordable housing building as it is to this day. We need to see through that that petition, that home rule petition will pass the legislature. And I believe that that is what the city council should be working toward next. We cannot have a hundred-and-forty-seven elderly and disabled residents put out in March with no options for housing. I spoke with one woman who had just recently moved into the building just prior to the June protest, and two of her friends were there with her, she had been living on their couch. She is disabled, she is a senior, she has nowhere to go. And the landlord is doing absolutely nothing to help relocate any of these residents. And I just, you know, we do not have enough affordable housing as it is. We must protect the most vulnerable people in our community. Every resident in the Forbes Building falls into that category. And so I would do anything within the city council power, lobbying the mayor, lobbying the Boston delegation who's at the State House to make sure that that home rule petition gets passed as it should and that we are able to protect buildings like the Forbes Building and the folks who live there who truly have no other options in terms of where they will go next.
Thank you. Kendra?
Thank you so much. One, I want to take a moment to share a little bit about myself, if I can, for a little, for ten seconds. I am a single mother of a five-year-old kid who is autistic and has very much, very special needs. And so I want to say to the people who are here watching, because it has been a constant point, talking point used against me about my absence at these events, that as a single mom who's struggling to find childcare and is working full-time and also running a campaign at the same time, it is very difficult for me to be everywhere at all times. And my absence at community events does not in any way, shape or form show a lack of support for these issues. I am very much standing with the people at the Forbes Building. I have shown up to all of their other demonstrations as I have been able to. And in the moments where I haven't, I have brought my kid with me and shown up for them in all of those moments as well. I have a very long history of fighting for housing justice in the city with City Life, who has been supporting the seniors at the Forbes Building. Now, the people, the people at the Forbes Building are doing is organizing, and I'm an organizer. And so for me, what I see that is not happening is the organizing that needs to happen in parallel to what's happening at the Forbes Building within the city council and at the state level. In order for us to be able to work on an issue that is so contentious, we need to mobilize people in the city council, we need to garner support at the State House, and we need to organize and build coalitions so that we can fight that eviction. The city of Boston has a lot of power to make sure that those people stay in that building. And what we're seeing is a lack of political will to be able to move on these things and make them happen and protect these seniors and these vulnerable seniors. And the reason for that is because I think that we have for a long time prioritized our relationship with developers instead of the people here in the city. We don't want a strong arm X, Y, and Z, right? We're fearful of doing these things. And so I think that we need to start putting our people before the profit of the city. And if we can do that at City Hall and we can do that at the State House, then we can make sure that we protect not only the people at the Forbes Building, but all of the other people in the district who are in fear of displacement.
Thank you. So we haven't talked much about the under-sixty disabled adult population, which is the other population that Ethos and the other ASAPS in Boston serve. And that's a, that's a critical part of both those who we serve and who may be on this webinar, but also the city, generally speaking. So I have, I have two questions related to this. And the first one is, in terms of security, safety response, response to someone's home in an emergency. So I am also the mom of two kids with challenges. I, they are male children, and I worry about what happens as they grow taller than me and potentially engage with law enforcement. So I would, first question is on, so on a developmentally, intellectually, mental illness, but in any way, someone who is challenged and encounters potentially law enforcement, what your approach would be as a city counselor to? What your approach would be as a city counselor to, to, to that? How would you, would you respond? Would you advocate a response by, by law enforcement or some other approach? And I think this one, this one, Mary, Kendra, Kendra, Mary. I think it's Kendra, Mary, this one, sorry. Kendra, Mary.
Great. Thank you so much, Valerie. So one, as I just mentioned, I'm a parent of a five-year-old kid. My son Zaire is not only a little black boy, but he's also completely non-verbal. And that means that he doesn't have the ability to communicate for himself, not only his needs, but what he has going on. Stimming is a thing that kids on the spectrum often do, which sometimes looks like exhibiting to other people, looks like them exhibiting erratic behavior. This is something, and I'm sorry that I'm, I'm taking a moment to answer, but the data shows that people with disabilities and particularly black and brown people are three to four times more likely to be killed by police if they have, if they have an interaction with the police. That is a reality that since I got my son's diagnosis, I have been grappling with and trying to figure out what happens if my son is having a moment either out in public or private in our home and how do we respond to those things? As a parent, thinking about those things are one of the most difficult, you know, making those decisions are very difficult for me. And so my answer to this question is not just as an elected official, but it's also as a parent who wants to protect their child from harm. One of the things that we're seeing now is that people employ the best team, which is usually what, what happens when, when people are having mental health crises, right? One of the things that we've learned is that even in instances where people are calling the best team, the police department is still being deployed. And so all of the city is presenting the best team as an alternative, police are still being deployed to the best. We have very little transparency and very little understanding in terms of how the police department actually deploys people when people call nine-one-one. That is information that the city council has been working really hard to get from the police union and from the police department. And my hope is that we'll have that information soon so that we can really find the gaps in there. But we have very little information about why that happens, why police are sent with the best team and so on and so forth. And so I think that in that sense, people should be able to make decisions about what they think is best for their family. I think that if a family member decides to call the best team, that the best team should show up and not the police department. And if somebody feels like their life or the life of their beloved one is in danger, that they should use the resources that, that they need to either call nine-one-one or get those kind of resources. I think that there's much more that the city can do. Those could not, those cannot be our only two options. But right now they are, and my hope is that we can work on building more diverse responses to people in need.
Thank you. Mary.
Yeah, such an important question, Val. And you know, I'm very proud of the work that I've done over the years with, with the special education community, specifically in the Boston Public Schools, working very closely with SPED PAC and ensuring that kids were getting access to opportunities, that IEPs were being followed. When it comes to policing, I fully embrace not only the reforms that the city council voted on more than a year ago that sadly have still not been fully put into place, and that's unfortunate. But also the model of responding more specifically to the calls that come in based on what the call needs. And so I envision a system of moving to nine-one-one and thinking, thinking of it more as a triage, like when you go to the emergency room. Who, who needs to be seen first, second, third? What is, what call requires policing? What call requires medical attention? What call requires mental health supports or services? That is the model that the city is moving toward. We need to ensure that that work continues. We, as parents, and I have two sons of my own, none of us should have to worry about our sons being singled out or harmed for reasons beyond their control. We need to make sure that we have the right folks in place to address these calls. And sometimes maybe it will be a social worker or two or three. Maybe sometimes it will be in tandem with police officers if there is, you know, an element of danger or violence involved. But I do believe it comes down to training and making sure that our Boston Police Department is the best trained police department in the country. That they are aware of what these, what these reform practices look like, that this is ongoing work, whether it's anti-bias, anti-racist training. This is something that you don't do once a year and check off a box. This is ongoing, meaningful, deliberate work, and we need to make sure that it happens and that the funding is there to get it done.
Thank you. So my, my second question relates to jobs and disabled adults being one of the most under or unemployed groups as a whole in, in our city and in District Six. And my question, I guess, so with you, Mary, on this one is, what would you do as a city counselor to, well, what would you do to improve and, and increase potential job opportunities?
So as someone who was laser focused on students with disabilities in the Boston Public Schools for my entire tenure as a school committee member under Mayor Menino and actually received my master's degree from the Harvard Graduate School of Education in education policy with a focus on special education. This is one of the number one groups in our city in the Boston Public Schools that is not being well-served by our one point three billion dollar system. We have to do more and better. We have over thirty-five percent of the students at Madison Park, which is the city's one vocational school, are identified as students with disabilities. So many of our students with disabilities are there, yet they're not getting the training and the services they need in order to enter the job market and be, you know, citizens partaking in our economy. We need to do better. One of the first things I would do, Val, is we need, like every other vocational school in this state. Madison Park needs its own board, not the school committee. We need its own board that is filled with tradespeople who are job creators, they are entrepreneurs, and they are the folks who are going to be laser focused on helping our kids get into the opportunities they need to enter the job market. In twenty nineteen, only twenty-eight percent, twenty-eight percent of our juniors and seniors at Madison Park had the opportunity to participate in an internship. Vocational technical education is all about hands-on learning. And if we are not giving our students the opportunity to do that hands-on learning, then we are not preparing them for that next step. We have to do better. We have a vocational school. We're spending millions, tens of millions of dollars a year to send kids to other programs because we don't have those programs at Madison Park, including green tech. Okay, this is one of the biggest industries moving forward. We're talking about addressing our environmental issues and putting kids to work in one of the biggest fields out there, and we're not doing it. So we need to do better and this will benefit all of our students and in particular, our students with disabilities and having partnerships with some of the community colleges so they can take classes there at the same time if that is an opportunity for them.
Great, thank you. So next question, Mary will start with you. So District Six is blessed with many knowledgeable elders. They've worked in government and business and housing and transportation and all sorts of, of, of things. And bring myriad resources and experiences to the table. How would you utilize elders in a, in a volunteer capacity? How would you engage them? How would you invite them in to District Six if you were elected? And then Kendra will go to you in two minutes.
Well, the, the number one answer is I would engage them in any way that they want to be engaged. Okay? So this is about what they want to do. I certainly have my ideas. I've always been a big fan of Generations Incorporated. And for those that might not be familiar, this is a wonderful program where our elders are going into school buildings across the city and working with children on reading. This is something that is desperately needed. We have more schools in the city of Boston. Actually, we currently have thirty-three schools that are in the bottom ten percent of the state. And those thirty-three schools educate almost seventeen thousand children. That is one-third of our school district. Our reading scores are among the lowest of all the urban areas and certainly among the lowest in the entire state of Massachusetts. So that is the kind of work that's vital. But again, when I go back to my senior center idea, Val, what I envision again, is having an intergenerational model where the seniors and the students are working together. There's an entrepreneurship club after school where we have business owners and entrepreneurs telling kids, this is how you create a business plan. This is how you put your funding model together. This is how you get your inventory. We have the opportunity to do that and to utilize seniors in all the ways that they want to be utilized, like leading exercise classes. Like I just learned that the woman I took yoga from at the Roach Center, who's now well into her seventies, she's still teaching yoga at the Roach Center. We, I, I would love to see more of our seniors doing that, like we could teach yoga in our schools, you know, mindfulness training. I mean, there's all sorts of things that we can do, but it's about having a conversation with the seniors for me and finding out what are the ways that they want to be engaged? What are the roles that they want to play in this community? Because we need them. We need their talent. We need their brain power. We need like everything that they want to give to us. I am who I am because of my grandparents, especially my two grandmothers, who are two of the greatest women I will ever know in my life. I would not be the woman I am today without the model that they set for me. I want all kids to have those models, mentorship opportunities. It is such a powerful thing that we could do.
Thanks, thanks, Mary. So my apologies, Kendra. I did not give you time to answer the question on underemployed and unemployed disabled adults. So we'll return to that one first for you, Kendra. Apologies.
Sure, thank you. No worries at all. I know we're in a tight time crunch and I'm more than happy to answer the question. Workforce development in particular, I think one of the things is that, yes, there are a myriad of things that we can implement to make sure that there are jobs that are available. But realistically, what's happening is that a lot of those jobs are not accessible to people who are differently able because of inflexibility from employers, for the most part, right? About making the changes necessary to make it so that folks who have disabilities can actually do the job. I think one of the things that we've seen with the COVID nineteen pandemic is that employers have been more willing to shift things in their workforce to make them more accessible because people cannot be in person. So things like working remotely, being on the computer, having days where people are not coming into the office or having days that people are going to the office and so on and so forth. Translation via Zoom. All of these things have made it so that different jobs are more accessible to people. I think that there are a lot of things that the city needs to do to make sure that these things are mandated and that people who are differently able have access to the jobs that they want and can do and that employers are making all of the necessary adjustments for them to be able to do that job. Obviously, that's part of what we're supposed to do. It's a part of the law, but there's things that are not being enforced. People are not having conversations about this when they're not happening. People feel like they're not being heard or like they don't have people advocating for them when these things do not happen and when employers are discriminating against people who are differently able. And so my hope is that we can actually strengthen accountability when it comes to that and talk more openly about how people with disabilities are being left out of the workforce because of some employers' inability to really make adjustments to meet them. So in addition to increasing funding for jobs, in addition to public-private partnerships with business owners to make sure that jobs are actually accessible to people who are differently able, the city needs to really make a concerted effort, and that is my hope and what I hope to do as a city counselor, to make a concerted effort to make sure that people are in alignment and making adjustments that are necessary for people who are differently able to really be able to do their jobs and work in their businesses and in their organizations.
Great, thank you. And again, that's, sorry for the delay, but the second question also goes to you, Kendra, the one that, that Mary just answered. So how would you engage our, our rich population, rich of, of talents in District Six in the community?
Yeah, so I love, I love volunteers. I love volunteering. I love volunteering. I love getting people to organize. I love intergenerational spaces. Similar to Mary, I grew up in a house where people, you know, again, I come from the Dominican Republic. Our parents and our grandparents typically don't live, they don't, you know, they don't, we don't send our folks to, to nursing homes. We do ad hoc care and they typically live in a household. So when I was very young, I got to meet my great-grandparents. They were alive still. I would spend time with them at their house and I got to meet them. My grandmother as well lived in my home and we got to spend a lot of time together and she lived until I was well into my twenties. And so I'm also, I practice a martial art called capoeira. And capoeira is very culturally inclined to intergenerational process that our communities are enriched when people are living together across generation, which is why we have someone's grandparent and then my little baby practicing the martial art together in our group. And so I say all of that to say that culturally I am predisposed to build community. I think that that is what strengthens us, is spending time together. How can I activate the seniors in our community? I think that we are sorely misusing their resources to support younger folks. I think that there is a well of wisdom that can be used both in our schools, in our nonprofit organizations and in our city government when it comes to volunteer opportunities. I think that there's a lot of opportunity for our nonprofit organizations. The city of Boston has like the highest concentration of nonprofit organizations in the entire state. There is, and all of those nonprofit organizations are in need of volunteers. I am an executive at a nonprofit organization. We need people to show up for those things and we're not doing enough to connect our community to those organizations and have them show up. So as a nonprofit executive, I think that that would be where I'd put my focus on. It was looking at the vast majority of the organizations that we have here, looking at what they're focusing on, what communities they're working with. Create a resource that would connect our seniors with these organizations that are in alignment with their interest and have them show up and be engaged in their community in that way.
Great, thanks. So this is my last question before we go to closing statements. And it's related to both pilot and inclusionary development because I think that the issue is, is similar. As, as a city, we are very hit or miss on how well we are, how, how we're either obtaining the, the financial or the community benefit from our non, our large nonprofits. And I'm thinking particularly our, our large universities, our hospital, our, our large hospital centers. And, you know, the, the, the entities of that size and also our large housing developers. So my question is twofold. So again, I'm going to give everybody three minutes to answer this one. How, well, if, would you change it? And if you would change the pilot and/or inclusionary development, how? And then two, what are your priorities for those, those funds? And although it's three in a row, Kendra, I do think this is, this one starts with you because of, of my error. Apologies.
No worries. Can you repeat the three questions?
So I think it's just two questions, but I, I'll repeat them. The first one is, would you, I guess it is, it's the first one's two-part. Would you change pilot or inclusionary development? If so, how? And then the second is, what would you prioritize using those funds on?
Great. I think one of the issues, so I am a renter and I live in a new development that has a certain percentage of affordable units. And I live in an affordable unit. My family and I applied for the lottery, have one of the lottery apartments. And that's how we're able to kind of afford living here. I think that there's a lot of, so in terms of inclusionary, like development, that is, I have my, my personal experience with that and I can share a little bit more about that. I know we have three minutes. So I'll focus on pilot for the answer of this question. The issue with pilot is that the city of Boston doesn't actually have the power to force these organizations or to hold these organizations accountable to paying their fair share, right? There are agreements between these organizations that are saying X, Y, and Z, and we will give this much. And so that's one of the difficulties with pilot is that there's not an enforcement mechanism within the city of Boston. My hope and what I hope to explore is if there is not an official enforcement, enforcement mechanism from the city of Boston, what do we do to build deeper relationship with these organizations so that they are more willing to pay their fair share in the city? I think a lot of the colleges and university tout kind of like free tuition for certain students and so on and so forth. And one of the things that I found, particularly when it comes to housing and affordable housing, you know, Alston is one-third owned by a university and so on and so forth, is that we need these organizations to really be paying their fair share. And I think in previous years and in previous leadership of both city council and the mayor's office, we have put very little public pressure on these organizations to really pay their fair share. And so my initial inclination is to try to build deeper relationships and to strengthen kind of like those commitments from the organizations to get them to pay their fair share into the city so that we have those financial resources. And I think that my second inclination would be to use the power of the city council's office to put public pressure on the organizations that are benefiting so much from our city, but not necessarily putting anything back into it or putting very, very minimal amount of resources back into it. When it comes to the pilot program in terms of my priorities for it, I have taught, two, two of my top priorities are education and the second one is affordable housing. And so when I look at pilot funds that are coming in, I would prioritize baseline budget for public. I would prioritize baseline budget for public schools and creating a baseline budget with public schools. Right now, the city council only has power to vote yes or no on the city's municipal budget. But if we have, there's a ballot question right now that would give the city council the ability to make changes to line items on the city budget. Now, if that passes and I'm elected and that becomes a reality, my hope is to use that to make sure that we are creating baseline budget for our schools and also making sure that we have the resources that we need to build more affordable housing, particularly when it comes to revising our housing plan in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, so for pilot, you know, we actually do have a lot that we can do, I believe, with pilot. And we do have very strong existing relationships with all of these institutions, whether they're our colleges, our hospitals. It really is a matter of political will and negotiation to get what we need. I don't necessarily believe that we want these institutions to write us a check every year. And going back to your last question, Val, I think this is an opportunity for us to get internships. Like what are the hospitals that could provide internships for the students in our city who are interested in going into health, health careers? I mean, we have the Edward M. Kennedy Health Careers Academy that unfortunately is sadly looking for a home right now because they lost their space at Northeastern. We have the opportunity to utilize and leverage the partnerships that we have. And we have folks, whether it's at the city level or the Boston Public Schools, who are in charge of managing these relationships to get intern, internships for our students. Almost all of our colleges, including Mass College of Art, have very expensive summer programming. Let's make that accessible for low-income students, students of color in the city of Boston. Let's make the camps that happen at Harvard University every year accessible for kids in the city of Boston. Let's also make sure that we're getting a set number of full four-year scholarships for our low-income students, our, our, our students of color in these universities. I think we have internships, we have summer programming, we have jobs, and we have internships that we can focus on. And so that is something I would like to see pilot. If there are institutions that want to write out a big check every year, more power to them. We'll take the check, but I would much rather think creatively and outside the box about how can we utilize these incredible institutions and what they are able to do to benefit students in the city of Boston specifically. And when I think about IDP, I think that there are opportunities there as well, Val. I think that we could raise the level. It's thirteen percent now. I think we could go as high as twenty percent for IDP. And I think we could also have an annual accountability and reporting mechanism so that we know that that money is going to affordable housing. We have the CPA grant, the third of that money every year, like one of the best policies that Andrea Campbell put forward as a city councillor. One-third of that money is going to affordable housing. Let's follow in track on an annual basis. Where, where are those affordable units or buildings going? What is CPA paying for? What is IDP paying for? And let's make sure that that work is getting done.
So I, I guess I fibbed. I do have one more question before we go to closing statements. Mass and Cass has obviously gotten a, a lot of, of press attention. And, you know, as it should, it is a, it is a confluence of homelessness, of, of race issues, of, of addiction and, and unemployment and all, all sorts of other issues that collided at that corner. But they collide on every single corner in this city. Addiction, opioid addiction and other substance misuse is happening, obviously everywhere, including in our elder community. And it, it, it sometimes is, is, is hidden and less addressed in our elder community. So I would like to hear specific thoughts and proposals on how you would address substance misuse in our elder population.
Is it me, Val, personally? Okay, thank you. So I think that, yeah, so we need, we need to, I, I believe strongly that, and again, I'm going to cite Andrea Campbell here. Andrea had said that the new mayor coming in would need to have a chief responsible for overseeing not only Mass and Cass, but substance use disorder in the city. I believe in that. I believe we need a cabinet-level position to address the crisis that we currently face, which is not only at Mass and Cass, it is in every neighborhood. In my, my street alone, we lost, you know, someone here who substance use disorder, a mom of three children. We, you know, door knocking, I met a young woman who told me when she started using at the age of thirteen and had relapsed after three years of sobriety. And as a woman was having trouble accessing services and treatment because there are more treatment beds for men than for women. That is a disparity that we have to address. We cannot be, you know, holding off beds for men versus women. We must treat those that are able and willing to go into treatment and do that work. But I also believe we are losing out on an opportunity to not reuse Long Island Shelter. We have over four hundred and sixty beds available on that island. The bridge is going to be tied up in court for years with Quincy. But my feeling is if we can shuttle people to Logan Airport by boat, then we can do the very same thing to get people to Long Island. That is an opportunity. We need those beds. We need supportive housing. I'm also in favor of the supportive housing that is being proposed at the Shattuck site. And even the Shattuck isn't being fully utilized right now. You know, we have to seize these opportunities and use them and not let people continue to suffer on the streets of Boston.
I'm going to give you thirty more seconds, Mary, to address specifically relative to elders and how you would address in the elder community.
Yeah, you know, I think what we have to do, Val, is make sure, and again, and I think this is where having a senior center, having a coordinated place where a multitude of services are available so that folks know where they can go to talk to someone and to access services. I think that is what I've learned as a city council candidate, that people reach out to me to be connected to services. And I have thankfully been able to do that work, reaching out to friends who are therapists, reaching out to counselors. We need to make sure that our seniors know that there is a place that they can also go to get the information they need, whether it's access to therapy, treatment, whatever it might be. But we need to make sure that folks know what is available to them to help them. And I think that is a role that even as city councillors that we have to play. We need to.
Thanks. Yeah, yeah, sorry, you're.
Yeah, sorry.
Kendra, you have two and a half minutes for this question.
Great, thank you so much. This is a question that's very near and due to my heart. It's something that I've spoken about very open and often when it comes to not only Mass and Cass, but addiction. When I was twenty-two years old, I lost my best friend to a heroin overdose. And Michael was a Division One athlete at the college that we attended together. He was from the New England area and was very well on his way to be, to go to the MLB. But lost his mother and then lost his grandfather, who raised him directly after, and could not handle, just couldn't handle the grief and started using heroin. And maybe a year after he started using heroin, he overdosed and died. Now, I was twenty-two, Mike was, Michael was also twenty-two years old. And so for me, I don't think that in good conscience, we can look at the impact of the opioid epidemic, the situation that's happening at Mass and Cass, the closing of the Long Island Bridge and all of the compiling effects that we are going to see from the COVID-19 pandemic, right? These are going to have inevitable issues with our residents and not create a comprehensive regional plan for responding to this issue in the city of Boston. I think one of the big issues when it comes to addiction in the elderly community is that it so often goes unnoticed and undiagnosed. And also that our seniors are much more susceptible, right, to the effects of these issues. And I think that there are a lot of triggers that we can identify for why people start using drugs or opioids or just substances in general, whether it be retirement, the death of a family member, they're losing their income, feeling loss of purpose, disconnected from community and so on and so forth. And so my approach to working on these issues is always to focus on the root cause. And so if we're seeing a structural root cause that is causing these issues and this kind of despondence in our community, then we work on those root causes. And we also provide the resources necessary so that people can deal with the issue when it's already there. I think overwhelmingly, addiction resources and counseling are not available to the elderly community. They're available to a specific community. The places where they're located often are inaccessible to seniors and elders in our communities. And so I think that in addition to responding to the issue on Mass and Cass, right, and creating a regional plan to respond to that issue, there are ways that we need to talk about this issue in different places. Young people, much, much younger people, school-aged children are also becoming addicted to opioids and also our seniors. And so that means that we need to put the resources where the issue is, inside of our schools, in our nursing homes, with families and in our public health centers so that people know the signs of addiction and how to respond to them when they see them.
Thank you. So thank you both for participating. It's been a great conversation. We have about five minutes left, so we have just enough time for two-minute closing statements. And Mary, you went first on the opening, so Kendra, you go first on the, on the closings.
Thank you, thank you so much. I don't know that I'll need two minutes. I'm very grateful for this conversation. I'm grateful for the opportunity that Ethos has provided me to learn. I am a, a young woman who, who's, you know, single parent. My mother, my mother has passed away and my, my only father, who's a senior now, is just entering into sixty-five. And so although I have a really deep commitment to the seniors in this district and have done a lot of work to make sure that we're supporting them, all of these issues are things that I get to learn about from you and really excited to work on them with you if I'm elected as your city councillor. So, you know, in addition, like I said earlier, all of these issues do not exist in a vacuum. There are issues that are prominent in our community when it comes to education, when it comes to affordable housing, when it comes to, to community safety that disproportionately impact our seniors and our elders. And so I look at my policy platform as being a representation of all of the intersecting issues that seniors have to deal with. And my hope is that we can implement them in a way that make it accessible to the specific community. I am grateful for all of your support. There's an election coming up on November second and I would be remiss if I didn't ask for your vote and your support. So thank you.
Thank you, Kendra. Mary?
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to thank everyone for spending this, you know, ninety minutes with us this morning. These issues are very important. And I think that for any of us who have been paying close attention through the pandemic and even before the pandemic, Boston faces a number of challenges right now. We have a housing crisis. We have an education crisis. We have a substance use disorder crisis. We have a mental health crisis that's impacting not only our seniors, but our children as well. And there's a lack of services available. And I know that organizations like Ethos and like others that are trying to do the good work of serving seniors are often not even able to find the folks that they need to serve all of the roles that they have open to address the needs of this community. And so I am committed to partnering with all of these organizations that serve our seniors, that serve our children and making sure that they are supported in our community, that all of these services are accessible to all and that we are addressing challenges of, of disability, of affordable housing, of education. I am someone who loves policymaking. I have a deep understanding of municipal budgets. As a result of my time as president of the League of Women Voters, as, as a member of the school committee overseeing one-third of the city's budget that is going toward, toward our school system every single year. So I also asked for your vote on November second. Early voting starts on October twenty-third and will be going on for a week in a number of different spots across the city. And we'll be sharing information about that as well. But I hope that experience will matter in this race. And I look forward to, to meeting you, supporting you as your next city councillor and, and connecting with you throughout the years ahead. So thank you so much.
Thank you both and thanks to our attendees for your time today. And as you know, make sure you get out and vote. It's the only way that your voice is heard. And, and I know that both candidates fully support access to the, to the ballot moving forward and in this election. So thanks, everyone, and have a wonderful afternoon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.